Please, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we will observe a moment of silence, please. All right, thank you. Call the city council meeting Monday, November, uh, December the ninth, six P M. to order. Council, in front of you, you have minutes, open session minutes and closed session minutes. If you have no corrections or amendments, entertain a motion, an approved motion. Have a motion, have a second. Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? If you, if you've given, if you'll give us your department report.
Hello, hello. All right. So, for the month of November, we responded to a hundred and twenty-one calls, so we're staying pretty busy. Uh, estimate, we're probably gonna finish the year somewhere around thirteen hundred and fifty calls, um, which going back up. Uh, we completed our written testing for the state for fire one and two with pretty good results. Uh, couple of people nerves got the better of them, so they're waiting on a retest day, but, uh, they all did very well. Very proud of all of them. Um, for the, uh, we're, the only thing we're lacking to get our training entity for the ability to teach EMT class is a site visit from the state. That'll probably happen sometime in January. Um, I've gotten all the documentation over to them and state says everything looks good there. Um, so, pretty excited about that. The, uh, SEMA with the floodplain administrator stuff, uh, they sent me an email on November fifteenth after you guys passed the adoption of the ordinance and the procedures and all that. Um, closed out that, we're good to go with them, at least for another year, so, uh, we're good there. Uh, update on the three different grants that I've applied for. Uh, we did not get selected this round for the Leary Firefighter Foundation grant for the cardiac monitors, but I'll reapply for that when it opens back up in May. Um, we did get awarded the conservation grant, the fifty percent grant for the new radios. Uh, those are actually in Springfield currently getting programmed, and as soon as they're done, I'll go pick them up and we'll put them in service, so that'll help out. Um, I haven't heard anything yet on the firehouse subs grant for the battery powered extrication equipment. They usually wait until right before they open it back up to send out their letters, so maybe January, February, we'll hear something on that. Um, and then I'm currently finishing up paperwork for the assistance of firefighters grant through FEMA. Uh, this year, we've decided we're gonna go for a burn tower. Um, cost of that project's roughly three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. This grant will cover all but five percent of it, so if, if we can get that, that would be light years ahead of where we have been, where we're at right now. Uh, we won't have to go anywhere for fire training, live fire training, so that'll be very, very beneficial. Um, this afternoon, we moved the original Mountain Grove fire truck over to the lower building at the new fire station. Um, plotting and scheming, I have a, uh, I have a guy that's gonna look at it and kinda give me an idea of what it would cost to restore it, 'cause I think it would look pretty cool in some parades around town, you know? It's history of Mountain Grove, I think it's, I think it's a great piece of equipment and something beneficial. Um, and I've also taught three or four CPR classes in the last month. Um, just small classes, but the need's there, so, uh, talked with Becky and I'm gonna send two of my paid guys to the CPR instructor class and get more instructors, so we can reach out a little bit further with it and see, see what we can do there and get people trained up. Um, other than that, that's, that's pretty much all I have for November, it was a good month.
Okay. Any questions from the council, from the chief? No, thanks, sir. Be safe, appreciate it. Chief Lethal?
Good evening. We, uh, answered seven hundred and sixty-five calls for services month. Um, down just a little bit, probably about a hundred calls, but, uh, we have really been focusing, um, this last month hard on Shop of the Hero program, it's December nineteenth at six P M. at Walmart. I think we had well over two hundred applicants for wanting assistance for Christmas. We're gonna narrow it down to probably, um, just right around a hundred, that'll give each kid a hundred and fifty dollars to spend for Christmas, so our funding was down a little bit this year, but that's all right, we'll pick it up again next year and, and hit it hard, but, um, as far as grants for us, we're still waiting to hear on, uh, an equipment grant that we applied for. Um, I did receive the Walmart grant to help out with Shop of the Hero, that was five thousand dollars, and, uh, still waiting to hear from the community foundation, see if we'll get anything out of that, that'll increase hopefully about twenty-five more kids if we can get that one as well, so.
So how many children do you have that you're not able, gonna be able to take care of?
Little over a hundred. But there are other programs, and that's some of the ones that we didn't select, 'cause they're being helped with other programs as well. So, but, um, the area keeps growing, um, we had several that are way outside of our, our area that were needing help, but we're just focusing on our area, so, but.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, sir, appreciate it, be safe. Counsel, in your package, you can see the senior citizen report, looks like the numbers are up again, it's forty-two hundred total meals. Any questions or comments on that? Now, we'll move on to citizen advisory committee, I think there's some, uh, was it a sheet in your paper? Jamie, if you wanna talk about that?
Yep, so, um, I had given Preston the lead to just talk about some of the activities on the square and advertising, like we talked about on the fences, um, by the soccer fields, just kinda give us some idea about generating more community events and even more business in Grove, so they gave us some feedback, some ideas around movie night, um, even suggesting maybe moving movies to the park to avoid any disruption on the square, um, investing in a new screen, making sure hours, it was late enough so it didn't affect other businesses, and even additional activities for the kids like bounce houses for music, local bands, variety shows. I love this one, council members to be part of a yearly karaoke night. So I think that, um, that would be hysterical, but, um, but I would participate for sure.
Sure, sure.
And then some miscellaneous stuff, um, different, you know, barbeque festival, chili cook-offs, school band, jazz band, marching band, drama club, um, so, and I thought this was a really great part of their suggestions, is that it would be ideal for there to be consistency around activities on the square, so picking like first Saturday of every month, every Saturday night during the summer, just creating that kind of expectation so the community knows that there's a certain date timeframe that there's gonna be activities on the square. And then as far as advertising, their recommendation was a Q R code for local businesses. If you're not familiar with the Q R code, it's an image that leads you basically to a website platform, um, in most cases, sometimes an app. Um, and that's kinda what I got to start thinking about when I was reading through the suggestions of creating something that has all of our information digitally located, so everything from the shopping, car and auto, restaurants with things like hours of operation menus, square festivities, so that anytime somebody is in our community that they have one centralized place to find all that information. Um, and I know, when I was on vacation this past summer, um, I can't remember where we went, but one of them had like an app for their town, so you just kinda go to the app and see all that kinda stuff, so thinking of that in the future as a way of just enhancing what people can find out about our community. Um, so yeah, so that was what they reported back.
A lot of good suggestions.
Yeah, definitely.
Bobby, Q R codes.
QR codes are easy, um, the app is not so easy.
Yeah.
Um, but the movie thing, um, it's really hard, it almost needs to be an indoor place, because in the summertime, it doesn't get dark till like nine o'clock and you can't even really start a movie. We have a very nice screen and a very nice projector, um, but it's just really hard to do anything. And then in the winter, when it, when the sun does go down early, it's kinda cold.
And if it, you know, if it gets dark at five o'clock, everybody's just getting home, it's kinda hard to, you know?
The movie thing is really hard, I've tried doing it a few times, it's just really hard.
Right, so some of these other suggestions, different, you know, bands, groups, variety show, like that kinda stuff might be better, 'cause then daylight won't matter as much as it would for a movie.
Like West Plains has explorewestplains.com or something, it's similar to like what you're talking about with the app.
Yeah.
It's not like their city webpage, it's a separate one just for
Right.
kind of all that stuff you're talking about.
And that might be easier than creating a mobile app, 'cause I know how much goes into it, how long that takes to get an app versus creating a website, and then just the Q R code image, so, but that could be something that maybe we think about coming here. Yeah, yeah.
Q R code could just be the, an extra page on the city website specifically for businesses and stuff, you know, add a tab, it could go straight to that, but, you know, so.
A lot of people still don't know about Q R codes, I've put some, like in our pool passes, I've put some secret little hidden Q R code in there and then they hit it and it takes them to like, oh, the city of Mountain Grove loves you, or something, you know, just some sort of little Easter egg, um, but it didn't get a lot of hits.
Didn't get a lot of hits, yeah.
Now, each week, we'll get the report, each month, are we supposed to make a decision, or is it just supposed to listen to?
A lot of it right now is just gathering ideas, um, as we talk about like strategic plan, I'm sure, and how we'll wrap some of these things into.
We wanna get back to some of our strategic planning and use some of these suggestions to do.
Yeah, so I've been just kinda giving them some focus things to talk about when they need, and then we'll gather it all and figure out what's gonna be a good opportunity for that. Um, and this kinda brings up another question that I had maybe just follow up, 'cause we had talked about restrooms, like public restrooms on the square, so what did we ever decide about that, or where were?
We're planning on doing that at the, at the farmer's market building.
Okay.
So where are we, park the trailers?
Yeah.
Just wanna add some bathrooms, just our crews will put those on.
And timeline for, for something like that?
I'd like to have him done by Mayfest.
Okay, 'cause yeah, I, I got some feedback, um, just with all the activities during Winterfest, what a burden that puts on the bathrooms in the businesses, especially in like the, yeah, what do you call it over there?
The event center.
Yes, event center, thank you, so, so yeah, so I had heard from a business owner over there that it was pretty.
Well, it's just a constant need, and we're spending a fortune on porta potties.
Right, right.
They could save money by not having to do.
We could've already built bathrooms for what we've spent on porta potties over the years.
And that was kinda, I was thinking to eliminate the burden for those, and obviously, 'cause that's a private property, so the city doesn't maintain those, but it's a city event and there's a lot of burden on any of the city.
Department doesn't have other stuff to work on through the wintertime, this is a good project to start during that time.
Excellent.
And our, and they have the capability of doing that, that's the nice thing, they never know how, but
Right.
you can do it in-house and I'll have to hire that side.
Yeah, that'll be excellent.
And we already have, you know, we have plumbing there, I mean, we have the sewer, the water, everything's there, so it's, you know, it's just the construction and actually getting it all installed, but it's needed, for sure, we have way, we have so many more events on the, in the downtown area now, and you have the restrooms off of the square, but we need something right there.
And once they're in, there'll need to be some kinda security around them.
Well, it needs, um,
Something.
Well, yeah, I mean, we always have issues with that, no matter what restaurants we have, but, um, even during the farmer's market, they need it even during that time. I mean, it's just, it's just needed, so.
And our restrooms off the square, then taken care of, and I've heard some comments at our last, well, maybe it was the Heritage Festival? I'm not sure when it was, but I heard some comments that they were not very good.
We hadn't planned on having them open for the Heritage Festival, and we have them closed because we've had so much vandalism over there. Um, we hadn't planned on having them open during Heritage Festival, but when the trailers got here, they weren't handicap accessible. So it was kind of a last minute thing to get the bathrooms cleaned up good enough to open them. Um, had we planned ahead better, we would've done a better job of having them ready for Heritage Festival, they would've been in better shape.
You'd think they would've.
Yeah, they didn't have anything on the trailer, so that's, so, they definitely need some attention, for sure. Um, where they're at, it's a constant, if you don't keep them locked up to, and keeping them locked up kinda defeats the purpose of having them there. They're constantly vandalized over there.
At least we would have them, you know, at events, to be nice, for people to go into.
If we'd have planned ahead better, we would've had them in better shape.
So we've had windows broken out of the old jail, and we finally gave up and just put plywood over the windows, but we also put a little one hundred dollars reward for anyone reporting on the vandalism of these windows, and it stopped, 'cause they were even breaking the ones up above.
The cameras that we installed down at the park has helped tremendously, I mean, it has slowed down the vandalism that we've had down there. The lighting, we've added way more lighting, we've added more cameras, and that has helped, and just getting the information out that there's cameras there, um, so things we'll address, yeah, so, well, you know, things we can address, but yes, definitely those restrooms need some attention.
And they've just not been, they have been used for a long time, 'cause they were in such bad shape.
Well, I mean, just, you can't leave them open all the time, but we definitely need to be able to use them during events, though.
Okay. Chief, was there any, uh, anyone on the public comment, I think?
What's up?
Okay. Old business, Jamie? It's one of them.
Just, I know this is on your administrative report, so I don't know if we wanna talk about it right now, just kinda status of where things are at, 'cause I know we wanted to stay diligent about timeline and discussing the whole, everything.
I would really like to get the information from Creative Pool Concepts, um, I had, we have, I didn't, but they had to reschedule due to some conflicts, but I'm scheduled to meet with them December eighteenth, I would really like to get some information from them before we decide if we wanna do the design phase that you all talked about. Um, I expect we may have to have a special meeting before the end of the month because of insurance quotes, so maybe we can kinda revisit that then to.
And remind just what this meeting is for, what they're gonna be, gonna have to do for you.
I'd like to hear from them, you, all I've heard from is the one on how the design would be, you know, how we would go through that process and what that cost would be. I'd like to get some information from another company on how they do it.
To do the same type of thing, it's just basically kind of a, another bid, if you will, on this type of process.
It was very, very expensive, wasn't it?
Around ten thousand to do the design phase, and that, I mean, he, the way he talked, it sounded like it's a pretty common and that that's pretty standard, but I just felt like we needed to have some more, if you, you guys didn't seem like we were in a huge rush to do that, so let's.
To be diligent about it, yeah.
Yeah, let's at least get it.
And knowing what we're gonna get for that investment, 'cause the companies may differ in
Right.
exactly what they do, so, right, excellent, great, well, thank you, that's all I wanna do, is just keep it a top of mind, so I appreciate that.
All right, next thing on the agenda is Sonic Lodge, uh, council, you have planning and zoning minutes there in your, in your, uh, packet, Becky, if you wanna talk about that?
I mean, they did, you all sent it back to them, so they did talk about it, um, you have three people from the planning and zoning board that are here. Um, they still felt like they really didn't agree with, um, council's decision to change the zoning based on the requirements that are currently in the zoning book for, um, R two, um, that there's still a lot of issues with that building, but there really wasn't anything planning and zoning could really do with it, because council already made that decision and council's decision is final. Um, so unless council wants to change the zoning on that, there really wasn't anything for the zoning board to do.
Do they have comments on any of the additional information that we learned that wasn't shared with us during that meeting, though? Because that's, do you guys wanna slide to send it back?
Basically, the thing is, is it doesn't qualify, and, I mean, the extra information that we had whenever some of the people we hear, Jamie, you can jump in here too, but it didn't change my opinion of it, it still doesn't qualify.
It doesn't have the yard space, it doesn't have parking, uh, now then the deal that guys fell through, so the idea with parking lot across the street's not gonna work, 'cause they don't own it stuff.
So they weren't interested in sending it back to us or to revisit changing the zoning then?
The liability is going to be back on the city if something happens.
That, yeah, that was kinda the.
A new buyer in line, we don't decide anything till they, we know who are targeting, whether it be.
But you already made this.
It shouldn't have been resowned in the first place, but that's, that's my own opinion.
But the problem is, Dale, if, if someone does that and that building falls, Danny went to two attorneys, and both attorneys said that because the city did what they did, and it falls, the city will be liable. Now, it may not be in our time as we're here, but somewhere down the road, if something happens to that building and it catches a fire and falls over on that building to the west and to the north, the city was liable, and he has talked to two attorneys that, that, that have stated that case that the city would be liable because of it not being following the ordinance and that the council did what they did. But that's just what Danny said.
That was, it was an apartment, if, if a new buyer shows up, sits with the old buyers to follow through, if it becomes a museum or an art or whatever,
Whatever.
liability still be there, would we change the zoning?
I mean, I understand, that'd be a question for Larry, I mean, I, I mean, that would be the thing is.
We don't have a customer at this moment in the building.
We do not, but you did go ahead and vote to change it to R three, which makes it eligible to be an apartment building. And so I think their concerns was when it becomes an apartment building, your risk of fire increases greatly.
So that's why I am asking, aren't they?
Only because of one lot next to us, one direction, the other three directions we're okay on?
You're, to the west and to the north, you've got, you've got people too close.
Well, it doesn't matter about that, I mean, the buildings don't need the ordinance to be a multifamily building.
So, did, would you guys recommend or ask for us to consider to change it back, or do we just do that on our own?
You just, we, we asked them to bring information and they came to the council and
They just might ask the zoning board.
Right, I think, I think it was a lesson learned of.
But as far as what we can do now, do we want to change it back the way it is? That's what I'm trying to get at, not just one thing.
Well, what it was, it wasn't really right either, though, was it?
Right, change, I think saying, change it back to R two doesn't do anything, it doesn't change the liability if it fell today, we're still liable if it's R two or R three.
Well, that's not what Ben said.
No, I mean, if you change it back, we're working just.
One way and we're not the other way, that, they're both multifamily residential, right?
R two is just that two of your plates, you can only have two.
But it's not that, is what I'm saying, yeah.
Still, you, you have the same risk.
So, reading between the lines, I think they're saying, planning and zoning is saying, there's no zoning we can do that really pertains to that building. It's kind of a, what's, what would be the word, yeah, it's kind of unique on its own.
Yeah.
We don't know what to call it, you know? Unless we can just say it's not zoned at all until somebody comes and presents us with a new business plan, I don't know if that's allowed, but.
But since the council changed it, now, Mark, tell me if I'm wrong, uh, was the city liable before when it was zoned like it was? Now that we changed it according to not with the.
When it's zoned like it was, it was, it was rezoned in bulk, I should say.
Right.
And where you've just got a two-family residence, you, that, that, your exits don't have to be what they have to be with multifamily and all that, I still don't think it's gonna make the yard space for whatever, but it will become more, it would be more compliant as a R two than it would be an R three, 'cause.
Does it fit the ordinance in R two? Does it fit the ordinance for R two, or does it not fit it for commercial anything?
I think commercial is really the only thing, right? And there's been multiple things that have been attempted in that building, the commercial, right? If I remember discussions about all that, like long time ago.
It's, it's, what, what's sad about the deal is the ball was dropped long before we came, because they allowed the residential area to approach on that building and it killed it.
And that was the thing, it was there before all the neighborhoods were surrounding it.
You know, so now then, they, it's stuck there, you have to touch the ball.
So it's, it's just not a great, like, there's no perfect solution, and I think that's where we struggle.
Someday I have to occupy.
But, well, yeah, that would be the ideal, but the problem was like, when you talk about multifamily home, which is what Tammy was asking, like, you know, well, if there's multiple versus a few, what's the difference? Well, if you ask our, uh, fire chief about that, like, the more single, the more families you have in them, more units, the higher your risk of fire, because it's, it's more people cooking and doing all the things in their unit, so it just increases exponentially, so that was kind of also another concern of having it be R three, is the increased risk and then the drop zone and all that and the safety that's surrounding the community, but just like Mark said, it's imperfect, because it was there before all those neighborhoods were up that close to it.
I don't know, I think they're.
I don't know that they think there's anything you could do with the building right now that it would fall under because there's so many issues with the building.
Yeah. We could change it back to R two, that's what it was, right?
And you know, the other thing too is, and, and, and this is strictly my opinion
Because the planning is.
is that I think, once the people that were going to buy it, looked at it and figured what was going to cost, the initial cost, I, I think, I think it scared them to go in there and see what, like, when Clint goes in there and tells you, you know, you have to do this and all the things that they need to do to make it safe and all this, I, I think it scared them. And I would, it would scare me, wouldn't it Dale, wouldn't you, I mean, you build, what did it cost to?
Oh, that's, oh, that's, yeah, you, you learn guard just in design work and engineering and get the fire hazards, take care of the sprinklers.
And I don't, I mean, how many, how many apartments they save, ten, fifteen?
Fourteen was what they.
So, I mean, even if you got a thousand dollars a month, fourteen, I mean, you're taking, you're talking a long time to.
It took us a lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
It sounded like it was all hashed out before it came to us and it was.
Well, and I think the big thing was officially changing the zoning instead of doing a conditional use. Which would have likely been, if we had, if we were making that accommodation to those, you know, developers to do that and then it fell through, it wouldn't have been changed to R three, it would have just, it would have, that would have died until the next opportunity came along with somebody proposing something different.
Until something was actually done.
And then we can evaluate each one individually to make sure that we make the best decision possible for that building instead of just slapping on an R three and now anybody who wants to put an R three building in there can do that because we've rezoned it, it doesn't matter. The yard space, the parking, any of those things because we changed it.
Right, so we need to, to take it back to R two?
No.
No.
Why not?
I think the highest and best use is not be a residential, the highest and best use is figure out some way to save the temple. And I don't want to be a cloud to the buyers coming in, but at the same time, I'll be welcome where they can have a, a good purpose for that, which is good to the public and good, and good to the lodge because they want to build for hundreds plus years. So if that's not two apartments, if it's not fourteen apartments, it needs to be some other type of use we can help favor the next buyers.
And it could be with an R two.
I don't think, because that would be like a duplex and it wouldn't.
Or a townhouse, a three-story townhouse would be good.
I mean, if you put it back to the original zoning, then you can let, if you have a developer, then the council is open to that developer coming in and talking to council
I want to be on the line to do that.
or talking to the Planning and Zoning Board about what that development might be and let it be vetted through the Planning and Zoning Board, which that's what we have them for, is let them vet what that might be and then council consider it based on having all the information.
So, tell me if this is right, for that, for this to say that they can't make a suggestion because council decision is final, if they were to make a suggestion, let's take what we want, we could, we can change it right now, right?
Well, because of you guys wanting to change the zoning, we would actually have to go through the notification process.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we would have to notify all the property owners and go through the notification process, that's state requirement. But, um, but yes, you can change it back.
So, so if it was actually something that was, that was good.
So if we, if we do decide to change it back to R two, since it's been changed to R three, it took it out of the grandfather and, uh, sitting there before, so you'd have to see that it, it meant the zoning for, for R two and I don't think you would there either. The yard space kills it.
The only purpose of doing R two would just be so nobody can do anything.
Well, I don't want a council to say with a piece of paper, like, figure out some way to save the temple.
Well, is it something that needs to be done? Is it something historical that can be done with it? I mean.
They don't have it registered or anything at this current time, so I don't know.
It's, it's, at this time, it's just an old building.
Right.
But it's a really old building.
We have, we have a lot of really old buildings around town. I mean, it's, it's an old building and, and they failed to keep it up. Uh, and, you know, if, if they want realistically do something with it, they should have registered, tried to get it registered on, on the historical society or whatever.
Right.
But, I mean, we've dozed a lot of houses, it's, I, we dozed one on down the street that was there before that. And it's, it's just an old building.
Larry?
Yeah, but it's a legend, Mark, here, I don't know.
That, that's where I want to go. So, is that true? Somebody comes in and puts apartments in there, we, they buy it, they fix it all up, they jump through all the hoops. They've got the, the sprinkler, they've got it all, that burns down and we're liable fifty years from now, that just doesn't sound right to me.
I think that's correct.
And we personally.
Correct that we're liable.
Where we went sideways was when we changed the zoning in violation of our own, of our own ordinance. We had requirements on there that, that it should have met. We, in effect, waived those by changing it. I think plaintiff's attorney would say we were negligent if there were a disaster. If the city was grossly negligent and changed that zoning in violation of their own ordinance, I wouldn't want to defend that, I think that's a loser. That's my opinion. And it won't make any difference next year, ten years or twenty years, we, once we take that affirmative act, we're in.
So, you can't go back to R two, so what are we going to do with the building?
Well, my thought would be to put it back to R two.
Yes.
Where we were to start with, that, that mitigates the error that, and I think it was an error that we made. It mitigates the error and puts it back to where it was, certainly it puts us in better position about waiving the ordinance. We're in a, I think, in a bad position.
So, the people that was going to do this and, and do it right, because they had to do it right because they had to get everything passed. But we're telling somebody that can't do that, but we can let that spot right down there go, I don't understand that at all. I just don't get that.
I just got lost, will you, will you give me a detail, please?
We've got the old Newton Hotel or whatever you want to call it right down here, just, I'll leave it right there. That's where I'm going to leave it.
Right.
But, but you got a new contractor coming in, you're going to spend million, two million dollars, whatever it costs, I don't know what it's going to cost. But he, he jumps through the hoops. He's got, he's got all the sprinkler systems, he's got all the exits, he, he's got, he's covered all the bases.
He didn't, yeah, but he would, he didn't cover all the bases, though. He could do all that to the inside of the building, but it still doesn't meet the ordinance because of the lot restrictions.
Well, that, that spot right down there sure no way.
It's a commercial lot.
It's a commercial lot. It's just like, I mean, it's just like the Mountain Grove Motel out there that operates like there. There's diff, it's zoned different and that's why it's allowed to be what it is.
And whoever was on the council back then, maybe they shouldn't have done that. But, but that's near here, that's done, and we've got to take care of what's in from now to the future.
But it kind of sounds like we got our answer, it can be commercial and that's what it should be then, maybe. I mean, we need to look into it, but.
As far as like what it would qualify for.
If that call, qualifies for commercial, it's going to be similar.
I think that would be the only thing, would be commercial, right?
Still, the lot, being right next to the residential, I don't know, we'd have to look for now and wait till.
I do know.
I think it would be best to maybe take Larry's advice and just take it back to R two to negate the issue that we created.
I agree.
And then wait and see what kind of applications you get.
Becky hit the nail on the head, we change it back to R two and if someone comes along with proposal, we send it to Planning and Zoning.
They vet it, they come back to you guys.
And let them do it, let them decide.
And let them, let them go on the record and make a finding.
What we're there for, that's it, what a concept.
Based on what Mark said, if we change it back to R two, we still have to make exceptions the same way to make it, is that saying the right way?
Well, it's, it's, it's been rezoned, it'd be, instead of, yeah, I mean, you can't put it back.
Right, so if we did, we'd be making some of the same exceptions or whatever we're calling, that's still going to carry the same liability.
Is that not right, Larry?
Do we have a conditional zoning in a sense when we give it to, to, to family?
You can, you can do a conditional use, but that's not what we did.
Yeah. Because, and you can't just be like, it has a conditional use without a person asking for it to be conditional use because it goes under that person and as soon as it sells, if it were to sell in the future, things go back.
It goes back.
So it only is with that individual person.
But if I want to spend two million dollars on an apartment and then I send it up to Dale and Dale, and Dale's got to come in and say, well, can I, I'm, I'm asking you to let me keep it as apartments. Because if they say no more conditional use, you're just shot out of luck, right? Which, which, if I was a contractor, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to do that. But, I mean, you're right, it goes back to R two.
Well, I could do a positive, we could figure out some way to make this, yeah.
There's got to be, there's got to be.
This temple, attract it to the real estate agency, they can pitch it to, you know, somewhere in a couple hundred mile radius who might, might want to come in here and do something for us.
And make, you know, do some commercial, make offices out of it.
The, the situation with, there's got to be a way, is it's not going to be perfect and always. Like, it's not going to check all the boxes, there's going to have to be some type of loss, compromise, something in that building. Um, and I think one of the biggest factors you have is somebody who is interested, willing in that, to do something with that building in that space. Because it also isn't going to be inexpensive, I think, to convert it to something else, is my understanding. Because it's going to be a significant investment, so is it, are they going to get a return on investing that much where it is? I mean, it's not very high traffic.
No.
When you look at putting in something commercial, so, so that's all I'm, like, I understand, trust me, we, we talked about this at nauseam at Planning and Zoning because we really want, wanted an, an amazing solution for that building because we all like that building and love the historical, you know, component, the history of it, all of it. Um, but still, that's, that's why we do that on Planning and Zoning is we have to hash out all those things and just try and make the best decision possible, which is not always like the perfect.
So if it was an R two, would it qualify for two apartments upstairs and a restaurant bar downstairs?
No.
No.
It'd have to be commercial, right?
It would have to be commercial to have the bar downstairs.
And still, yet, if you think about, even, even if you think about commercial, there's, you got to have so much parking for so much square footage of your business and stuff like, I mean, it's just, it's, it's going to be hard to do anything with that.
But there's nothing cool to go to San Carlos and all those brick buildings and all the culture down there. Why can't we, uh, figure out a way where we can make this attractive somewhere?
Because we can't take that building and, and implant it where it would be a good place for it. It's in a, it, again, got put there, things grew up around it, but it's going to be really hard to make it something it's not.
It's just lovely, wouldn't you?
You know, it's not in this really, you know, cool string of historic stone buildings all in the same place or, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a challenge, it is.
I mean, we could start the process by, um, by saying that we want to try to put it back to R two and if you want to do that.
Have to make a motion to put it back to R two.
To correct the error.
To correct the error.
My second.
Have a motion to go back to R two, have a second, where's the, Web, how you vote?
Yes.
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 So, let, let me ask this real quick, although the only reason we would be doing that is just so nobody can do anything with it until they come back to us.
Just to correct the error. Correct the error that was made by council. It'll look better and justify that we went back.
And then move forward with whatever somebody's going to do.
Yeah, I think we need the, a better long-term solution, so I'll say no.
Yes.
I guess no.
Yes.
So what we got?
Two noes.
Yep.
Three noes.
Five three, I believe.
Five three, okay, all right. So Becky, you and you and Kim, get that started.
Yep.
I guess, Zach, to answer your question, I, I mean, what?
Like, I think if we're going to change anything, it needs to be commercial, it would be the only thing that seems right, is what I'm saying. Because we know R two's not right. The only thing is, and I'm not necessarily opposed to that, is us getting the control back if it were R two and then we say they have to come to us again like they did before, I think is the only way I'm seeing that.
We've got control no matter what happens.
Because if they come and want to do commercial.
If it's three, somebody go in, if it's three now, somebody go in and put apartment without ever asking us.
Right.
And it'll, it'll go to Planning and Zoning with this recommendation, it'll still have to go back to Planning and Zoning because then we have to hold a, a public meeting.
Public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing for anybody who got that letter that can ta, and so we'll hash it out in Planning and Zoning whether R two is even feasible.
It may be, it may be, it may be commercial.
There might be something else that we start to say, hey, what about commercial?
It may be commercial.
Like, we'll, we'll hash all that out at Planning and Zoning.
But to be able to do that, we need to go back and do the zoning process.
Is that within a hundred eighty-five feet?
Notify everyone, everybody within a hundred eighty-five feet and go through that process.
Okay, so that's going to be.
That is right, if it were, that's what we're all saying, if it stayed three like it is now, they could go put an apartment in without us knowing about it, yeah.
Yeah, we kind of lost all the control.
Well, he would, he would have to approve the plans, but they wouldn't have to come back to you.
If, if, no, check box, if you have to go through the right.
Right, as long as they approve, yeah.
So, you, you're not just going to green light all the way through sprinklers, stopping every.
No, but there'd be a little bit less oversight in being that it was.
I see.
Just like anything else, just like any other building project.
I'd like to ask Larry another question, but Larry? It, it needs to go back to an R two first, correct? To correct that error before then, Planning and Zoning then maybe, after R two,
Go through the proper chain of command.
Then maybe back to commercial or two, not back to commercial, but commercial or whatever, but we need to move it back to R two first.
Is that right?
Yeah, that's a good point, Karen, Karen's got a good point there to do that, that's right.
So, I mean, Planning and Zoning needs to be aware of why we're doing this so that when it does go back to Planning and Zoning, they don't just try to, you know, skip that step by saying, well, no, let's not take it back to R two, let's go ahead and do it to commercial or whatever. And would that be something feasible, like, is there a certain amount of time you would say it needs to lie at that R two zoning before we would do anything further as far as Planning and Zoning?
I don't think so.
Or would it be something like, hey, yeah, we're good with that and then, all right, next. Think on the agenda, let's talk about other zoning opportunities for this piece of property, like, could you do it in the same meeting? Or would you say?
Well, the building's for sale, so I'm sure you're probably going to have somebody at some point that's going to come back to something.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Larry.
Appreciate it, Larry. Becky has some information on the senior center? You have some paper, uh, some information?
Well, I just want to bring it back up because when we stopped doing the meals on Wednesdays, uh, based on their food budget and we all know how bad the food costs were. As I told you in my report, she's running about at forty-three percent on expenses. Um, it would be close, but she can try to do, if we want to add the Wednesday meals back to do the rest of the fiscal year, um, she could try to do, uh, lower budget meals on those days and still try to use some of the free meal options that she's using and we could try to add those back. You know, you have a tendency for some of the seniors to come more in the wintertime than you do in the summertime. Sometimes they're out and about more when the weather's nicer and, um, so.
And you need a motion for this?
I get.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
So, what's the motion?
To add the, to add the Wednesday meals.
I'm going to, we start, or we state what is the, uh, meal plan for the seniors?
Okay, motion and a second, Mark, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 Can we get a report back on the food costs and budget and things like that on a, a little more consistent basis right now? Like, can we maybe get a point?
You will.
Is that in, what's in the minutes?
Yeah, so when you guys get your January, Kim does those by the quarter, so you'll have an update in January of all of that breakdown.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I vote yes.
Yes. And we can just, sorry, we can just add it on to her report each month.
Yeah, I think it would be good to see just because if we're trying to, like, get ahead of this, right?
Monetize.
And make sure that it doesn't slip back and if we can just continue to have creative solutions around keeping it.
So Kim, let's just add that to the senior center report.
Yeah, that would be great.
Becky and Kim's looking at that, Jamie, I mean, they're not going to, I mean, I don't know that we have to, that's what they do, they do that to make sure that's not.
It's fine, we can, we can add that on, that doesn't.
I mean, that's not.
Transparency, I think it would be nice to see, we don't necessarily have to talk about it every time, but just to be able to have it reported back.
Well, the report that's there, that ledger report takes us two minutes to run, so we can just add that to the report each month.
Yeah. Yeah, perfect, I'd like that.
Wednesday lunch out, is that something we voted on?
Yeah.
Is it in our budget by the end of June?
All time long with the budget.
It was when we did the budget.
Yeah, because the food costs were so over, it was our kind of, let's try this and see how this would work.
Let's try, and it has, you know, if you look at where she's at on food costs, because we were way over on food costs before. So it, it has brought it down.
There's been some.
But it also, there's been some benefit, she also has gotten some people that have stepped up and then participating more at the center and doing videos.
I think it's been more like a community, like, hey, here's a community outreach opportunity that helps.
Which has helped Becky to kind of make those contacts and, and, so I think it's been a good thing going forward.
So what we voted for, is that just temporary for the winter or is that permanent right now?
I mean, it'll be through the rest of this fiscal year, through, through June.
Sure, through June. And if something else comes up, then we'll address it, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we'll keep an eye on it if it's, yeah, but we'll, we'll try it for him.
And then we'd still, we know we talked about this before, to always, I don't know, look as hard as we can for, like, I know most other of our towns around us are fully supported by grants, you know, it'd be so nice to get closer to that.
It's not really just a grant, so the other centers are actually owned by, um, by the Office on Aging.
Oh, okay.
So they're, all of their employees are Office on Aging employees, they are not. So, they're, all of their employees are Office on Aging employees, they are not city facilities, now, it might be a city building.
Yeah, but they're.
But the Office on Aging just pays rent to use that building, and then the people that work in there are all Office on Aging employees, they are not city employees.
Is that something available to us, or?
It is not, we.
So, even if we were interested, we couldn't do it right now?
No, so like, this goes all the way back to the seventies, that they picked so many towns, I think they have seventeen, that they have different ones in the, in this Office on Aging's area. And they haven't added anything on to that in a long time, yeah, but they get federal monies that comes through the state.
Was that the Green Town program four years ago?
No, that's a different program, yeah.
That was something different?
The Green Town was a work, for working businesses?
That was for all the people that worked.
This actually, so the program and what we've tried to maintain it down there is, it's meant to be a nutrition program, so that program down there is not meant to be a moneymaker, it's not meant to be.
Sure.
It's meant to be a nutrition program for our seniors, that instead of them sitting at home and opening up a can of soup, that, and it's not just the food, but it's the, you know.
The social interaction, the activity, yeah.
The fellowship, yeah, it, it, it's important.
Yes.
Getting up and going somewhere, doing something.
Depression and isolation is huge in the.
I don't know that it ever, has it ever broken even?
No.
It's ne- it's, it's kinda like some other things like that, you know, it's, it's, some of the things in the city, you just don't.
I mean, I.
I mean, there's a lot of cities that will not, there's a lot of cities that will not put the amount of money that you guys put into a senior center. We're very, I think the seniors are very blessed here to have that, um, but, you know, it's, it's an important program, I would hate to see us, you know, lose that program.
Oh, yeah.
But as long as the city is willing to put that money in, then the Office on Aging is probably gonna continue. You know, unless their funding would get cut federally, they will continue to give us, we get seventy-five hundred a month is what we get from them to do the program, and all of that goes towards food, so.
Does any of that increase, like, as we have population increases, is that reassessed at any point? It's just, it is what it is.
In fact, it went down, we used to get more, and it might be.
Oh, huh.
Becky, Becky, whenever.
They've been up to eighty-five hundred. Oh, so it's up to eighty-five hundred.
So, whenever you use that, compare our program, the City of Mountain Grove's program, to other towns that are completely aging, our program's better. I mean, because of, I, I mean, the, the ways that people are treated and everything, it's just a better deal, isn't it?
Oh, for sure. Well, it's just they're, we are able to provide a little bit better meals, because you guys are helping fund salaries, you're helping fund food.
Our product is better than those towns that are all about it.
If you would go eat at some of the other senior centers, you would realize how well our food and stuff is here.
And I, I must tell you, Becky does a great job, and her, her ladies do, I mean, she's done, she.
Yeah, they do. We have a really, we have a good crew down there now, and, you know, the cooks are doing a great job and.
And the few times that I've ate down there is great, I mean, I know there's other people eat here all the time, but, eh, I think it's, it's really improved.
We aren't considered what they call an indirect site, and in southwest Missouri, there's only us and Mountain View are the only two indirect sites, and Mountain View City also helps fund their senior center. The rest of the senior centers, in the seventeen ones that they have, are all funded by the Office on Aging, but even back when I started with the city eighteen years ago, at the senior center, that's the way the funding was made too.
So, indirect means we own it, they give us some money toward it, or direct means they own it.
Correct.
And Mountain Grove's, I, I've been in the one in Mountain View, Mountain Grove's is great, I mean, and Mountain View's is, they're, they're good, but they just, you know, smaller town, they just.
Well, and our building was small, you know, it, it served the purpose that we had, but then we had to fire, and that allowed the city to build a bigger facility and, you know, to accommodate, but.
That makes sense, hopefully that helps everybody that's listening to.
Kinda understand where.
How it works.
Yes.
Because the, and then what's said on the other end, and I think that now that we've said all that, it's, it's well worth it, that, uh, for everybody to understand that the towns that have the nice pools we've talked about are one of these that it's owned by. So, there's money that goes toward here, but, but obviously, this is money well spent, because we have a lot of senior, but we need everybody to understand too, that that's where we have to allocate a lot.
We do. But that's also why.
The pie's only so big.
Right.
That's also why we don't require payment at the door, you know, we've never made it, in fact, when the Office on Aging, um, was monitoring at the front desk. It's, you were not allowed to, you can say you're, it's a contribution, it's a suggested contribution, but we don't want anybody to ever feel like they can't come there and eat based on what they can afford to do.
The Office of Aging does that?
That was a, that was a regulation for, to get the federal funding.
That was there to. Even the ones they own are like that too.
Correct, correct.
And the food, I mean, what is it now, five dollars?
Four fifty.
Four fifty, what can you eat for four fifty, the meal that they serve?
Or is it four, what did we, we raised it three fifty, it's four fifty, yeah.
Okay, any other comments about senior center, if not, we'll move on to new business, page two, uh, have, Tammy wants to talk about rabbits?
Yes, I've had rabbits for five years in my barn, little pet rabbits, they're not livestock rabbits, they're called lion heads. Anyway, I think Google told me their average weight is four pounds, okay, have them in cages, well, a month ago, last month, um, someone got in my barn and killed them and, and, um. I contacted the police and animal control, and now I need a variance to have my rabbits. And, um, would might as well add a guinea pig to that too, because I just found out that you can't have a guinea pig without a variance. So, I live on three acres at the edge down, um, there is no one behind me at all. Um, the rabbits are in special made cages inside the barn, and I wanna replace my rabbits. I have one left, the handicapped ones left, uh, the other three were killed, so.
By someone?
I believe it, because the cages in there are, they're special built cages, and the cages have, the doors have to go up in order to get into the cage. Um, anyway, I don't know how a predator could have done it, and there was no blood, there was nothing, they were laid out in a row on the barn, in, on the ground there inside my barn. Uh, I have rebuilt the barn, basically, to have locks on all the doors and, and, um, what have you, so I don't expect any more trouble, but we'll see. Anyway, I need a variance from the city to be able to have them. For.
So, what do you have?
I thought people had rabbits as pets.
Well, I would, what I really want to do, and while we're on the subject, what I really want to do, and I realize it's a very touchy subject, but is to look at our animal ordinances. You know, because, um, this guinea pig has really stirred the pot, um, when we consider a guinea pig livestock. Um, and that came out, and that has, has, you know, has a lot of people living a life of crime that didn't know they were living a life of crime, okay? We, um, what?
You're one of them?
I, here I am, I'm one of them.
So.
Yes, but I was.
Do you have, um, with the, you have three acres?
Yes, at a barn.
So, do you fall under the, with the chickens too, I mean, you?
I have chickens, yes.
Okay, so how many chickens, do you, you have chickens in a rooster, or just chickens?
Just chickens, I had, I bought, yeah, well, they, and they have, they're died, three of them have died since then, I had these old chickens. And I, someone delivered me some new chickens, and, um, they were supposed to, the agreement was that they would separate them, the old from the new, when they delivered them, but they didn't do it. And that's about the time that, that all this happened, the person came to get the old chickens, because I had someplace for them to go, and then we couldn't tell the old from the new. But I have gotten rid of those now, it was just, sometimes Tammy gets in mess with them. And that's, but they're gone now, then, and, uh, a couple of, I, I, in a matter of days, I'll be down to four chickens, and won't get any more until spring.
So, we, we did a lot of work on the animal stuff, as Jamie knows, 'cause she was part of that not that long ago, and we actually took it to the voters, and so it was set up at five acres or more.
Correct.
So, um, that would mean that you would have to have a variance, if we really follow, um, and Mark's been a little more a part of this over the years too, but. If we really follow the way the, uh, it's set up in our ordinances, is that there's a board of adjustment, it's kind of a, um, an arm off of the planning and zoning board, it's called the board of adjustment. The mayor appoints it, they very rarely get anything to them, but the rabbits, getting a variance for rabbits or something like that, really ought to go through the board of adjustment. Now, that council's got final say on any of this stuff, so the council can do what they want on it, but that, it would be the proper protocol, would be for it to go through the board of adjustment.
And our, and, and the ordinance does say no rabbits or chickens unless it's so many acres.
Correct, um, so.
No, you can have chickens.
I think.
You can have chickens if you apply, if you apply for the, the, the permit to have chickens.
Do you have the permit?
Yes. I went through the whole process.
That is the backyard chickens, that's added into our ordinances.
But remember, there's no one around me, no one is affected in any way, um.
And with any type of variance, there's nobody around me, Tammy, either, and I fought it for over a year to get chickens, so, I'm, I, I totally understand where you come from. But with variances, do you have to do the same type of notification in a hundred and eighty-five feet, like, there's a process of notification to your surrounding property holders?
And if you give one, if you give one variance, then you're gonna have a lot of other people come up with variances too, with less than their acreage.
If you go through the, if you go. If you go through the board, the way it's set up, then we do the notification process, and that, 'cause the council makes the decision right now, they're making it based on just what you've told them, and they don't know if there's any neighbors that would have an issue with it or anything like that. That's the, I'm, you know, I'm saying that's the.
That's kinda, that's the chain of command, the process, kinda like planning and zoning.
Well, and that's the process that we set up to follow, um.
And I'd be a little concerned that if we said yes to you, that it'd be looked at as favoritism, as you person sitting on council, as if there was any other community member that would come up and ask for that same variance, and that same way, and we were saying no. I'd just be concerned of not walking it through the appropriate process to make sure everything is, you know, fair.
Because we did have a lady come in who asked about rabbits, I don't think you were on the council.
We said we asked for quail, I don't remember rabbits, I remember quail, I'm planning and zoning for rabbits.
I don't remember rabbits, but someone.
Well, we had a lady come in, this been quite, this is back before you.
But they're not livestock rabbits.
Okay, okay.
They were on the, and, and, and she had them, and, and they were, they were doing it, and we said no.
Oh, right. Yes, we did, yes, we did. That is true.
So, you know, I mean, it.
And you understand what talking pets, not like, they are not, they are not meat rabbits, they are pets.
I think we ought to look at that.
Well, that's with the guinea pigs too, like, there's guinea pig pets, and then there's guinea pig raised for food.
I know people with, with pet rabbits, they stay in the house, or it's like cats and dogs.
Yeah.
And stuff, I think we need to look at the fact that there's a difference between a pet.
Right.
And livestock.
And that's, that might be what needs to be better defined.
Right, I mean, I have neighbors that are really, I mean, my barn is not near my neighbors, but I have neighbors in little lots, in campers, and they can have up to four dogs. You know, in those little bitty lots, and, you know, they're right at my bedroom windows, there's seven, right at my bedroom windows, there's three campers with a total of seven dogs. You know, I, we have to have some things, I think we have to have some things changed.
Oh, yeah, I think there needs to be better clarification around.
But, yeah.
So, how do you tell somebody when they walk in, and one of these is my pet rabbits? How do you know if they're pet rabbits or just rabbits, how do you know that?
You don't.
Well, you can tell by the size.
You don't. You don't.
But if you wanna have a, I mean, it's kinda like a, a pedigree dog and a mutt dog, if you wanna have a mutt rabbit, get a mutt rabbit, but don't get fifteen mutt rabbits, you can only have so many.
Well, they taste different, well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess we could one by one down.
So, I'm, so, can't have, you can't have rabbits now, but, but, and you can have so many chickens, so, are you talking about?
So, we have to have committee to address these, this, these key policies, livestock and domestic.
We have a. We have a board of adjustment that should hear it.
The board of adjustment will hear Tammy's.
That's what you, that's what you set it up for, is this type of thing.
Bo- Tammy's, Tammy, the board of adjustment will hear Tammy's request for variance, and I don't know, I, I, we have it, I don't even know who's on it.
I'd have to look, if they haven't met, we probably.
Uh, she's right, now we'll protect you from it.
I know that the mayor's on it, uh, and I know, I think there's.
It's on our list, it's on the list.
The council is one member of council that's supposed to be on it too.
Yeah, it's on the list that we did at the first of the year, we'll have to look back on who was on there, notify them and get them together.
Hard thing of this is, it's kinda rabbit trail, no pun intended, yeah, yeah, if we allow so many dogs, so many chickens, you know, then it's like it keeps going, well, why not a re- and that is true, if all the others are allowed, it's.
Well, you can buy some.
And it would sound like, it would come back to bite us.
Yeah.
If, if you say, yeah, okay, we gonna do this.
And then it just keeps going.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just gonna say.
That or we pull it all back.
That this same opposition came up with the chickens, and the fact is, we're gonna let people have backyard chickens, and then everybody in Mountain Grove is gonna have backyard chickens, and I'm gonna say, not everybody in Mountain Grove has backyard chickens.
How many, how many chicken?
Zero complaints.
I think we have like, what, six?
Yeah.
Yeah, I th- I think we passed something like that, people's not gonna run out and just.
Right, and if there's, you know, if there's thought run into how we approve things like this, why you have boards to make these decisions.
I think they're.
Yeah, who's gonna go buy a thousand dollar chicken coop, or eight hundred dollar chicken coop for four chickens or five?
Or a hundred dollar pet rabbit, we're not talking about some flea market rabbits here, I spent big bucks on my little rabbits pets, you know? And right now, you know, but it's worth it for the garden, that's what it's all about.
You feed them the garden scraps.
No, you put their poop in the garden, it's a great fertilizer, yeah.
It's a best fertilizer in the world.
Right, yeah, but three or three rabbits is not gonna make the odds different.
And I think that's.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Really, you wanna come visit my garden?
And I think that was the problem with the rabbit situation before, is people, they was afraid people was gonna have ten or fifteen rabbits, and the manure was gonna build up, and the stinking stuff was there.
Right.
It don't stink.
It, thank you, rabbit doesn't stink, does it?
Is this a motion, we'll send it to the, the variance, please?
Thank you, it doesn't stink.
Motion to send it to, um.
Whatever.
The committee or the.
The board of adjustment.
Board of adjustment, make a motion, Dale.
Yes, I do.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, alright, request for event insurance, Ms. Barbe, come right on up, let's move right on.
Okay.
And Ms. Barbe, council, you have a, some information in your, uh, where is it, Becky?
On what our requirements are?
Yes, from Murma, yep, it's in there.
It's in, it's in.
It's, I, it's attached to the evidence.
Yes, okay. Go right ahead.
Okay, in Mountain Grove, each year, there are four major parades, the alumni parade in July, a homecoming parade in September, the Veterans Day Parade in November, and the Christmas Parade in December. There are at least two festivals, the Heritage Festival in August and Winterfest in December, thousands of people come into town to attend these events. While there in Mountain Grove, many will shop, eat, buy groceries, and fill their gas tanks, some will spend the night in our hotels and B and Bs. The town benefits both from the tax revenue and the positive image our community receives through these events. The organizations, committees, alumni, and students work hard to promote their events, and many of us spend our own money to build floats and support the events. We hold raffles, bake sales, and ask for donations to raise money to pay for the cost of the events, and give scholarships, prizes, and sponsor other activities that benefit the community. No individual is making money on these types of community events, most of these events are put on by nonprofit organizations that just scrape by from one event to the next. So, why do any of us organize a float, a parade, a festival, or an event? We do it because we love our town, the Ozarks, and our country, we want to celebrate in some small way our pride in the community in which we live, and show appreciation for the people who make that possible. Now to the reason for my remarks this evening, to require these organizations to purchase insurance for these events is the straw that breaks the camel's back. Those of us involved in these events fear you will see less community involvement and fewer events, simply due to the additional cost of obtaining insurance. It is a burden and a barrier for these small groups and organizations, it is money that they could otherwise spend on improving and expanding the events, or fund other activities to be, benefit the community. I would like to see the city of Mountain Grove seriously consider modifying its insurance coverage to cover at least these low-risk events. Policies could be developed to define which types of events are covered by the city's insurance, providing this coverage would show the city's support for such events, and encourage the development of more and better events to enhance our community. Thank you very much for your time on the agenda this evening, and all you do for Mountain Grove, and make it a better place to work, live, and play. Thank you, I have a copy of everything I just said, if you wanted.
Sure.
How much is insurance per event for your, for organization?
It varies with the number of people, we paid as much as eight hundred dollars.
So, eight hundred to thousands per, per event?
Yeah, that's a lot of cookies, cake, and fries to sell.
Whenever, whenever I was doing the fire department truck pulls and I. Whenever, whenever I was doing the fire department truck pulls, and I had to buy event insurance, it was five hundred bucks for one night.
So, who do you buy this insurance from?
It's what was the chamber of.
We went through the city.
Well, there's a, we have a company called Hub, that we, people can go through them. Um, we, Kim has a form that they come in and fill out, tells what their event is gonna be, and then she contacts Hub for a cost estimate, and they can pay for it through Hub. But some of the others, like the Fair Board, all the events they have, they have their own insurance. They've purchased insurance, and then they provide us a certificate. They go through, I think, one of the insurance agencies here in town, and they have their own insurance. So, it just depends, and like, some of the inflatables that come into town, if they're, like, the K House that was here, they have their own insurance, and they provide us a certificate of insurance. So, it varies, some people have their own, um, but most of the ones here in town, like the Chamber, all of their events, they do, don't they do all them through Hub? Um, Mark, did you guys, how did you guys do, did you do it through Hub?
I went down to Lou Cannon's and paid five hundred bucks.
So, you got, went through a local agency.
And is that eight hundred dollars, is that for the event, like, the top end of what you paid, was that per day or for the whole of that?
That was for the day and a half, two day.
Okay.
It's based on people, number of people.
Yeah.
If you go through Hub, well, it's not just people, Kim, what all is the criteria on the Hub?
I mean, it depends on what kind of event you're having, how many people are gonna be there, what.
How many vendors?
Yeah, what, how many vendors?
And there's certain things that they won't cover, like, they will not, Hub will not do a truck pool. They will not do fireworks, they will not do bounce houses, they will not do, um.
Immersion derbies.
Do they do the radio, they won't, there's some.
I don't know, because, I don't think so.
The bull, there's some about the bull stuff they won't do.
Bull riding, the stuff they won't do.
So, if people want insurance for that, they have to go somewhere else, they can't do it through Hub. But Hub will do, like, basic event insurance, like they do for Heritage Festival, they will do that.
And that, does that cover? Like, the individual businesses that come out and have bedrocks?
It's just liability insurance.
For injury. In our, in our Murma, what we go through, does, will not do that. They don't cover it, right?
So, if you decided to do something like that, you would have to say that the city is sponsoring those events. For it to be covered under the city's insurance, but it is not these groups or agencies that are doing it, that the city is sponsoring it. For you to be able to have it covered under your insurance.
Is it the city partnering?
Well, no, because if we, we're not collecting the money or doing anything for the event. Those other people, so if you read, it says, if it's operated, any activity, event, activity, or facility is operated by an independent contractor, not an employee. Then, the sponsoring organization has to have liability insurance arising out of the event.
But.
Can, can we not run something like this as, like, a mini grant?
You mean, to the, to the individual groups?
Yeah, like we do the, like.
You guys could do, I mean, they just still have to get the insurance, but you would give them a grant to cover the cost.
Yeah, but you would. Yes.
And they could spend it on whatever they needed to spend it on, and I kinda wonder about a mini grant.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, you could do that.
I think that would be the best solution.
We do mini grants for, but if you do that, I, I mean, we.
There has to be a criteria, I mean, you can't just go.
And you're gonna have, everybody's gonna want.
But we do a lot of them, we do a lot of insurance, so just, the Chamber does a lot of events, um.
Yeah. They do?
The fair, probably more than anybody, so.
But, don't we already partner with them in some way, don't we provide employees, don't we sell our, now they're already?
But we do that, we do that for every event, you know, we have employees, I mean, cause we, the employees help with the Heritage Fest. Employees help with Winterfest, they, uh, do a ton of stuff at the fair.
Right.
I mean, we'll always do that, there's not an, you know.
Does that not make us a partner with them?
But that, did it, we're, but we're not sponsoring it, we're not.
Right, we're not liable.
So, if you've done, if you've done.
We're providing in-house service.
We're just, I mean, we would do that for any event that's happening in town, you've gotta have traffic control, you've gotta have all those things, I mean, we're gonna partner with any event that does that.
Right.
If you've done mini grants, you wouldn't necessarily have to do it specifically, say, we're giving this to you to buy insurance with. I mean, in July Debbie and the Heritage Fest could come, and then they could figure that insurance into what they wanted for mini grant.
True. True.
And then go from there.
Yes.
And, and have extra nine dollars to spend to work, yeah.
That way you're not, yeah, yeah, and if the, if it, when it comes time for proof of insurance, if, if a group has decided to spend that money somewhere else, and they can't come up with the insurance.
I mean, some of the stuff that Debbie mentioned in hers would be, if you wanna do something like that, and you're wanting to create criteria, then some of the things that she was talking about, about, you know. What it is they're doing, and how many people, and what that's generated, maybe that's something you could use to set up that criteria.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're gonna have, we'll get a lot of, we'll get a lot, we get a lot of really random requests to use city facilities.
I think, I think. I think a lot of our mini grants, uh, I, I, I'll argue this again, I think there should be an application process on paper, not just come up here and say, oh, we'd like to have this much money for that. I think it's, should be on paper, and if we get fifteen grants, and we've only got enough money to support ten, there should be a scoring system on, is this gonna benefit the community here better than this one here? And go down.
I mean, there's ways to kinda monitor what that economic impact is for each of those.
Do what?
Didn't we start an application this, on our mini grants this last?
I don't, I don't know.
I think we talked about it, but I talked about it.
We talked about it.
Well, we had them come present their.
Come present, yeah.
Present their need budgets.
Yeah. Yeah.
But if you get a grant wrote out, and Clint can attest to this, if you get a grant wrote out and a good application, it'll give you the full picture versus three or four minutes of right here.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather do something like that than worry about the partnering thing.
Yeah.
Because then, that's hard to distinguish, when they're, and then you get the auditors involved saying that if, if you're gonna, if the city sponsors the event, then we have to have a city employee collect any monies that come in from that event.
Right, okay.
And the chain of command on the money.
And you have to record that, to make them happy with, that's what got us into trouble.
And the risk is always gonna change, cause if you have something that's an established event, like Heritage Fest, and we kinda know what to expect versus other things coming in, and we're partnering with that.
Right, and that, that kinda, with the auditors, kinda got us into that issue of not, their money not running through the city, because we weren't collecting that money. You know, they were saying, okay, and Mark and them have a truck pool, but there was nobody there to say, how many people attended, how many tickets you sold, and you run that money through a register. Somebody put all that money in a bank bag, bring it up here and turn it in, how many people handled that, and how many times was there chances for somebody to do something with that money?
Right.
So, they don't like it, that is just something they don't like.
How many, how many events are we talking about Becky, I mean, total?
A lot.
Ten, eight, twelve?
When you talk about the fair, and all the bull rides, and all the truck pulls, and, I mean, it's, you've got a lot.
Because.
But some of, some of them folks may not wanna mess with this, they just may buy their own insurance and go.
Well, they're all gonna come in like that.
The Fair Board, I mean, I think they're used to having their own all the time, but if, but if they're given a grant to possibly not be out, cause.
Well, let's not advertise as a grant for that, just do it like. You know, you get a mini grant for this.
The attorney's question about liability wise, which is a better avenue?
Do what, I'm sorry?
That's Larry.
So, we asked the attorney, which is a better way to?
I think what Mark suggested is the way to go.
Have them fill out an application and for what, what they want.
It's simple, it's simple, and application process, we can determine if, if it's, you know, appropriate for what we're wanting to put our money behind.
And, and in that way, during that time between now and the budget time, we can get those and have them, put the money in the budget to cover those.
Well, and there are.
Are you about done with the programs for the year?
I mean, for this calendar year, but, you know, we probably won't have a, I, another big event until, once May Fest starts, it seems like after that, it's just one thing after another, the rest of it.
For this calendar.
Well, that means on a calendar.
Yeah.
And that'll give, that'll give us time, this, the council, and you, and Kim, and everybody kinda come up with a, a, a form or a, something.
Mr. Mayor, are we doing limit that?
You'll have to.
Well, I think we're gonna have like, so much available, like Mark was saying, and then we can, you know, kinda decide.
You guys will have to plan it in the budget that.
And there would probably be what, like, some type of time period, which people will need to get those in for the year, right?
Yeah, open it, say, say, say if you wanna apply for, say, I don't know, figure up the average on what we give on mini grants for the next fiscal, fiscal year. And in January, say, Mountain Grove's taking applications for grants to be issued July first. That gives them six months to write a grant, and turn it in, and then Mr. Mayor, whoever, can make a committee, and you can look at these grants, and you can score them, and say, that looks like it's gonna bring a lot of revenue to town, a lot of people, uh, it's good wholesome, you know?
Yeah.
And then, figure a core scoring system on, and those that score the highest, get the money.
There's gotta be, there's gotta go some criteria, yes. Well, and I think.
They can put how much money they want, you don't have to award that amount of money.
I think it also, I think it also has to be that, I like the idea of the one time a year where you put it, because we can't have people showing up.
Like trickling in throughout the year, yeah.
A week, a week before their event, wanting us to help them get the insurance for it, and have time to do that.
Right.
Now, you know, grant opens in January, closes April first, that gives you April, May, June.
Just like we do our other grant cycles.
Yeah.
And the other thing, carry Mars one step, and, and then that way, if you have so many, maybe you can go to an insurance company and say, hey, we have all these people that need insurance. Now, we're not, the city's not gonna give them the money, but like Ms. Barbe and them, you know, if there's four or five that's gonna do it, maybe Lou Cannon or someone, or Hub, or whoever, we say we've got these people, would you?
Well, I think the issue is, they can get the insurance, but it's just a financial burden on them to be able to do it.
Right, right. And then that way.
It is, maybe, maybe.
That's the fact, aren't that, you said the fair probably would go ahead and get their own, but, they won't.
They'll apply for that.
Our, our grant doesn't say anything about, we're gonna, it's just gonna be a grant, it's not gonna say, well, this is for insurance, or this is for buying this, or the, it's just gonna be, just like, whenever the Chamber Commerce comes up and asks for grants, the VFW.
For why, the VFW.
They may not wanna hassle with filling out the paperwork and going through all that, you know?
I, I think it's a great idea.
Yes, Bobby.
I sent everybody on council an email of a really cool tool they sent us last year, um, placer.ai, they do, um. So, they can, they monitor every cell phone that comes into the area, and I can pick any area, any date, and it tells you exactly how many people came, how far they came from, where they came from, like, the miles they put on, where they shopped.
From their cell phone?
Yeah.
Without them off air. Big brothers, big brother.
Big brother's really big, I don't want him to watch.
That's how people know where the traffic's at, they see her by cell phone.
So, what?
Yeah.
But the reason I brought that up is because that could tell you exactly how many people came to a particular event, like Heritage Fest twenty twenty-four. We had two point three thousand people come from Mountain Grove, that's twenty percent of our people. One point three thousand came from Kabul, um, eight hundred and sixty-nine came from Norwood, four hundred and thirty-one came from Hartville, four hundred and four from Ava. You could see exactly where they shopped, if they went long or.
And that, that would be a great tool in, in the grant.
Yeah, that's what I said, and we can include that information with the application.
So, now, Bobby, was Randy from out of state to Heritage Festival, what's percent?
Wow.
Yeah, it shows exactly how far they traveled to.
What's the farthest?
Some people drove over, it stopped at two hundred and fifty miles, so we, we drew over eighty people from two hundred and fifty miles plus.
Wow.
So, that gives you, maybe we can advertise a little bit more than Norwood, and Hartville, and Ava, and maybe they'll get more people.
It's a really cool tool, I'd, I'd like to, that would be really beneficial.
So, how many people total came to, to Heritage Festival?
This was just a demo of the data, so they wouldn't let me have everything.
Okay.
But just roughly adding up all those towns you.
Ten thousand?
Close, close, local towns, we've got over.
Yeah, we need to support that.
I kinda roughly spotted.
About seven thousand, maybe, seven thousand people.
So, Ms. Barbe, if your insurance was.
That was on Heritage Fest, and that was, that was only one of the days, that was the night.
That was probably the concert, not?
That's only one of the days.
Okay, so, so if the insurance for the Heritage Festival was eight hundred dollars, and you had ten thousand people, that's, that's pretty cheap per person for insurance, for liability.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty good.
But the rent would go up. You had ten thousand people, you're, you have more money.
May go up here.
But they.
I don't think we estimated anywhere.
I think what she's saying is, they really work hard to raise their money to come and come, you know, people are shopping.
Exactly, we don't, yes, yes, yes.
It's, it's really, it's really entertain, inter, aggravating to have an event, and then you gotta give your money to the insurance company.
Yeah.
I mean, that five hundred dollars I spent for the event insurance for the truck would've bought some good equipment, but it's just like tearing it up, throwing it away.
Right. Right.
We just don't have a choice as a city.
Right.
And that's it in a nutshell, but I, I feel like that we can give some kind of, uh, financial help to them through that grant application program.
We have, we have.
Yeah.
Because if we don't have insurance for this, and something happens, the city has to pick up the tab. And if it's not enough, then they come after us individually, to, to, to gain the rest of it, right Larry? I mean, the city would be liable, if we don't, if we say, oh, well, we're not gonna do this, we're just gonna go, and something happens.
Right, right.
They try to pull us in.
Yeah, and it'd be millions, you know, like that.
Right, right, but, yeah, it's, I wanna make sure that we're supporting all these people though.
Oh, yeah, 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 I think, I agree with Mark, I think this is a good way to, a good way to be fair, and to have, and to, everybody, and then everybody can get a chance to do it.
It sounds like.
Yeah.
Well, and if, if you go through, if you go through the grant process, you wouldn't necessarily have to have them come in July, you could already decide on who's get, who's getting the grant, and then just award it to them.
Well, you know, about the budget time.
So, why don't we, why don't, Kim and I work on an application, and we'll just present it at the next council meeting.
So, Larry.
Be sure, when you work on the application, you include a good narrative on how they're gonna.
Right.
So, should we conclude that for every one of the grant, mini grants we have, or just the new ones?
I think we oughta do all of them.
I think it would be for all of them.
All of them, I think they all oughta have it, I think they all oughta do it, okay.
Just streamline it, yeah.
And those that's got mini grants in the past, I think, Becky, if you could give them some kind of notes to say, hey, this is gonna be the way it's gonna be done.
And I don't think they'll have a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
No, because I, I, I mean, the ones that's doing a good job, Heritage Festival and the Chamber and all of them.
I think they're already kinda starting to do those things, it'll just put some structure to it, and consistency, so that everybody's.
Yeah. Your favorite word, what is it?
Does that sound good to you?
My favorite word.
Your favorite word.
Transparency.
Exactly, now you come.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Barbe, how would that, that work? I think, I think that, I think that will get you, get to the point where you and your committee need to be, and, uh, thank you so much, appreciate it.
That's, that's.
Thank you.
All right, all right, we're moving on, the home serve program, Becky?
I mean, this isn't something you have to make a decision on tonight, because there was a lot of information there, I mean, if you feel comfortable making a decision, I did put a sheet in front of you to give you an idea. I know you had the information on your computer to kinda see what the home serve program is, um, I sent you the link so that you could look at it online. Um, she sent me copies of the agreements that we would have to approve if we decide to do it. Um, they do all of the contact with the customer, they take care of all of that. Uh, the sheet in front of you, um, because that does have names on it, please turn that in when we get done, but I wanted you to have the information on what kind of adjustments we've done since January. And we've had twenty-three leaks adjusted, um, for a total of five thousand six seventy-nine sixteen is what we have adjusted.
And when we adjust, we only do the sewer.
Correct.
And we do.
What we do is, what we do is, what we do is go through and look at a six-month average for that customer, and so we take what that average is over their normal bills, and we adjust the sewer down to what that average is.
What it should be, they still pay the water, we give all the sewer back.
Yes, and then they, yeah, they still have to pay the water, but then, they, we adjust the sewer down to what that average is over the last six months, and then they, we adjust that part off.
And then my next question is, this program, does it cover just the same sewer, does it cover the water too?
I think it would cover the water too, if we decided to do that, but we don't, currently, our ordinance, the way you guys have it set up, we don't do adjustments on water.
That's what we need to consider when we do it.
We would have, we would have to pass an ordinance.
So, so, this six dollars a month is for external water. So, does that mean outside, if you have a leak outside, they're gonna pay for the water, are they gonna pay to fix the water leak?
Up to eighty-five hundred dollars.
Oh, they are paying, paying.
Oh, they haven't paid, paid the fix?
Says up to eighty-five hundred dollars per call.
Yeah.
And then external sewer line, and in-house, so you could be sixteen, eleven, and five if you did all of it.
Yeah, that's, that's big money there.
Insurance as a whole, they just play those games, and they can't just say, you buy insurance, they're covered if you have a leak, it's, well, do you have it outside or inside, or on your left side of your house, or your right side?
Yeah, now, the way that is set up, there is a ten percent royalty that goes to the municipality, but you can opt to waive that, and if you do that, then the prices are lowered by fifty cents for any customer who involves.
I'd also like to be able to compare the last one we were talking about, to have these side by side and compare each one.
Okay, there was one difference I noticed in them, but I'll bring that, and we can look at it at the next meeting, so we can have side by side comparisons, but their program, we had to do all the billing for it.
So Becky, when we, when we implement our.
So, we were gonna have a lot more, our, we were gonna have to add it to our billing.
Implement it.
Yeah, 'cause you weren't sure if we could do that with our system that you checked, and we could, we did add that line item.
We could, but it was gonna create, it was gonna create workload for us in here, and we were gonna have to collect the money, and then submit it to them, and that seemed like a lot of extra man hours.
And the city Salem, I believe it was Salem, had just started using it that year, and they really hadn't had experience with any claims at that time, and we were going to check back with them to see
Yeah.
how it had been working for their city.
So, well, if we put in the new water meters, won't, won't that help with that external water line leak? I mean, if we, if we put in meters.
I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna give them information to where they'll know it sooner.
We can check it every day, the residents can check their account every day.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, it'll be an app, right, where I could go to it and say, you know, if I'm not home with my water running.
You'd be able to check it to where you would have, you know, right now, people don't know until we call them or send out bills or do checks, or if they see water in their yard, but.
Mr. Mayor, I still like the idea of an in-house water fund, and if you wanna do one to three dollars per month per customer, it would more than cover these numbers.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a good, and maybe something to look at.
It's money for the consumer, and.
Right.
Cause the difference is probably just going to the insurance company.
Now, you're not talking about doing repairs, you're just talking about to cover the adjustments.
To cover the forgiveness of.
Cause this covers, this program covers repairs to the customer, but you're just talking about covering what they would be out of.
Cover the water, your bill adjusted.
Just the adjustment, right.
We would adjust, we would adjust the.
If you had one here, there's.
We would change the ordinance, we'd give you to, to most people, send up front.
The asset to cover repairs, it's mostly this.
Well, the thing is, is, I, I mean, that one's four thousand dollars, fifty-one dollars and four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if, I would pay a dollar a month or whatever, we'll figures out too, you know, and then.
At two dollars a month, that's about forty-eight thousand a year, we have an account to cover all water, just.
And you could add it, you could add it too, you know, put it on there.
That, that should be included with, with all of this as we're looking at things.
And that's why, you know, this is still, like I said, we don't have to make a decision on this tonight, let me get some more information, let me follow up with Salem, and see how they felt about their program now that they've had it in place for a while, and get some side by side comparisons for you between that program and this one here.
I, I think that's excellent.
And then maybe, and then still look at that option too.
I think that's an excellent idea, and, and.
Good job, thank you, Dave, and, and.
We can match their price and say, the bill could plummet, it could be a high, compared to these numbers, multiply it out.
We don't have a ton of huge numbers, so there's, you know, there's not a lot, but.
Two to twenty dollars a jetties and two to thirty dollars.
I would, I'd be curious on these houses here, I, I see the names of the people, but I'd be curious on if they're occupied. If, if they're, if they're occupied, or if they're just, if there are no ones living.
Some of that are definitely occupied.
Right.
Now, you can leave your house and not even know it, while you're living there, I mean, till, yeah, you get your bill.
Right.
And one other question on this, if we did either this one or, the other thing we're thinking about, this is optional for every customer, or is it?
They don't have to do it, right.
So then we'd have to think about if we were gonna do it ourselves, would it be mandatory, or would it be optional?
I don't think we would wanna make.
And my motion is we'll say if you opt out.
Would we be able, our computer system be able to keep track, I'm sure we could, who has the insurance or doesn't, when it comes time to.
I'm sure we can, it would, we would have to contact our, cause generally on our water bills, you know, everything prints the same on every bill, so.
That's another thing to look at while you're looking at this. Yeah, so you just pull up that person's water bill, does it have that line item on it?
But we would, we could probably do the line item, but we'd probably have to go in and put zeros in that line item for anybody that opted out of it.
Oh.
You know what I'm saying, we'd have to have the line item for everybody, but we'd probably have to go in and put zeros.
And see if it has a zero next to it, or has the dollar amount.
And you do a zero for everyone, and then just go in and adjust it so that who has it.
We, we take an amount for everybody, they, they wanna opt out, they can then we do it with a zero.
I think if, if we done either program, we oughta think about doing away with making adjustments on anything, cause we're giving people the opportunity not to be in that position.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's it.
Right. So you either kind of, yeah, you either.
Then you could just say you're not doing adjustments at all, and you have this program to do that.
There's insurance.
Right, right.
Do you know any other cities that do anything like that, that do that?
I don't, but we can, Kim and I can do some checking.
Does that sound like something we could do on the?
Yeah, I think remember to, to make this work, we have to have pretty good participation, if you had a hundred people, that's, that's, or pot smaller.
I think they can do it.
Yeah. Yeah.
But though, but if I'm participating, and Dale's participating, and you're not, then I'm covered, and, and you know, it, then, you know, you're just.
But we want enough people to have a pot big enough to pay it, if it's.
That's the problem with making it non-mandatory, you said it, nobody does it.
If you do it in the interest of the summer, there's only four options.
Well, my motion has a mandatory when I make it, and if they wanna opt out, they can walk down here and sign it out on their own, that's fine.
Yeah.
I have my bill.
And, and you understand what you're doing.
If I take my, my name off the, the bill, I'm, I'm off for one full year, if I can back in.
Do we make a mandatory though?
Cause otherwise, I believe next week we decide to shut back in.
We'd be calling it mandatory, it'd be calling it what we're doing, and then you, you can, you can decline it, but you have to, I guess.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's.
Then it's not mandatory, right?
It's not mandatory if you wanna.
It's just universally applied, and then you can opt out of it.
That's it, that's it.
Like every other thing that we deal with.
That's it.
So it's a little.
Okay, all right.
It shows up on your bill.
But yeah, I'd say more research and.
Yeah, we need a little more time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Becky, take a look at it, go from there, all right, next thing is spill prevention at the airport.
So, like you guys voted before, we are required by EPA to have a plan in place, and it has to be by an approved agency, approved by EPA, and this is the agency that was approved, um, you guys approved that expense a while back, and you have attached, um, to the agenda that plan, which is pretty extensive for that little bit of airport fuel that we have out there, but we need a motion to approve the plan that was prepared for us by this agency for EPA.
To, to our engineers and, and the, and who we had before to do that?
No, this is, this was actually done, um, by a company approved by, they have to be, um, approved by EPA as, um.
Can you read them, can you read those, those pages to us first?
Yeah, I see them. Hundred and fourteen pages.
A hundred and fourteen.
I've only read twice, but I voted on that, cause I wanna vote for nothing.
That's why you had a copy attached to your agendas.
How much did it char, really charge?
Sixteen hundred dollars to do that.
All right, we have a motion to approve that?
I'm making a motion.
Motion to prove it, the second, second by Brad, all in favor?
Second. Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Have we, have we sold quite a bit of fuel?
We just got it up and going, like, it's just.
I don't think it's up and going.
That is the biggest nightmare.
Well, Bobby, go on.
Oh, my gosh.
So while we're on that, are we, are we, are they apologizing, or giving us any money off?
No.
No, no.
Cause it's all their fault.
Oh, yeah, it's been a mess.
Is it their, their point of sales system?
All of it, it's all a joke.
It's like a new thing, they don't know how to use it.
Yeah, it's too new, security's too new, no one knows how to set it up, no one knows, they couldn't tell us what needed to be set up before, so we could prep for them. They bring the wrong valves, they don't, they have crappy hardware, and we have to reset every two days, and it's just bad.
Is it operating now, since the valve thing the other day, did you get that?
It was, it, uh, it was, and a couple days ago, the, after this, there was communication issues, I think the network piece they put in is a really low-end piece, and you have to reboot it every couple days.
So, is, is Mountain View and all these other airports using these people?
No, we got the newest security protocol there was, so we had to find like this special global processing.
So this is the, this is what you bought when you bought this back when you guys voted on it, oh, year, you know, year and a half ago.
One more thing, okay.
Um, it was, and the, as far as the paying, so we, you guys paid half upfront when you first did it, and then the other half had to be paid when they delivered the tanks. And so, you've already paid them.
How much were you paying?
I mean, I think the total contract you guys did was like eighty thousand dollars.
How long?
I'm sorry?
The contract?
I mean, it was just the contract to get it here and get it installed.
That's the tank and setting it up and everything.
Yeah.
But I mean, well, this software that you're talking about, or whatever we're using, what?
Um, software's no problem, it's just the networking equipment they're using to connect everything fails, so then nothing can talk, they can't swipe their card and they have to charge because.
So what can be done about that?
Well, David has actually contacted a company that services a lot of the tanks for like the truck stops and stuff in the area, and they do a lot of them, because the company we're dealing with just doesn't seem to have the knowledge to do what they're doing, so he came out and looked at it the other day, and he's supposed to be helping us out with some advice on how to get this running.
So we have some alternatives of other companies that we can.
That's what we're doing right now, is this.
Do lives for this and.
We're asking for his opinion on what he thinks we need to be doing, because he deals with this on a regular basis, and he has those type of pumps, and we feel like the company just didn't have anybody on staff that had any knowledge of how to do it, and that.
Would it be appropriate if, if we are gonna have to hire somebody else, to say, since we're guinea pigs, can you pay these other people that are having to do your job?
Man, I.
You know, like, try.
I haven't, they do not like being at this place, because we have had so many conversations about the follow-up that their company has had.
I think it'll actually be a very simple fix and start being reliable, I just need to replace that little network piece that they have.
It'll be, that comes down to, we have to pay another company, and we don't wanna be out more.
Have you unplugged it, plugged it back to your phone?
No, I'm, she's, you're right.
At this point, the guy that came out was willing to come out and not charge us anything yet, until he sees what we have and what kind of issues we're having.
I can put the little, kinda like the little Unifi boxy out here, it's like three hundred bucks on management network, and it'll be reliable, and it'll be live.
Well, but they need to.
They need to step up, they won't be a very good recommendation.
We couldn't even get them here with the stuff, that has been the thing, I mean, they've just dragged their feet and dragged their feet, and tell us they were showing up, and they didn't show up, and.
That's just the bad thing about paying them upfront.
Yeah, that's what I told him, I said, maybe we should've withheld that payment until all of the installations are complete, yeah.
Yeah, or. All right, catering permit, Becky?
Okay, so we have had some requests, um, and I think the requests are gonna continue, because we have the event center across the street. Um, the state has a catering permit, so if somebody has a state liquor license, generally someone that does catering, they have a liquor license somewhere already, and then they do this catering for special events, and so the state charges them. And the charge that they charge them is for each event that they do, um, and we don't really have anything in our ordinances that says we can do a catering per, permit. We did it, because, um, the other day, they needed it for an event over here at the event center, so Kim and I went ahead and just charged them what the state charges, and did the catering permit, but we really didn't have anything in writing in our ordinances to allow us to do that. So I would like, um, for the council to approve us going ahead, and I'll prepare an ordinance, have it for the next meeting, um, for us to add the caterers permit, and charge the same as what the state does, um, to have a catering permit.
And that, and that gives them the, a, a.
Yeah, it hasn't just been at the event center, I've also had a request, because they were gonna do an event out at the, um, fruit experiment station, and they were having a caterer come in out there. So I think it's gonna, you're gonna see more and more of this.
More and more, yeah.
So this just means that the caterer that comes can serve alcohol.
Yeah.
Correct.
And when they come in and get to put in.
You're giving, you're, because they don't need a, a, a liquor license to stay here, and, you know, it's three hundred dollars a year to do liquor by the drink here, they're just wanting a one-time caterer's permit to be able to serve alcohol.
How much does it cost?
They don't serve alcohol, they don't have a permit?
It's fifteen dollars, I'm sorry.
They don't need.
If they don't serve alcohol, they don't have a permit?
They don't need one.
But they can.
Okay.
And their sales tax goes to whatever town they live in?
No, it should go here.
They do, okay.
If they, if they're collecting sales tax while they're doing an event here.
It shouldn't go through the permit process.
No, all this will be, will just be to make it legal for them to serve alcohol in town. They'll go along with.
But how do we collect, how do we collect it, if they just come in to the event center and do a dig and then go back home, how do we know that they?
I mean, you gotta trust that people are turning in their.
Just like the food trucks, how do you know that the food trucks are turning in their tanks?
Well, we know that, we know that some of the food trucks are not, they're needing some tax.
They gotta have a permit.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I think, that's what, I think the state needs to come.
Well, you know, we can't track, we're, we, we can't do anything about it.
All right, have a motion for that?
We need to keep their business.
Yeah.
Mark made the motion, have a second?
Can, I mean, can I ask another question on that, just we've gone off for a little bit, but, so, can they cater at any event? So like, what if it was a, you know, a non-kid-friendly event or something, that they could still cater and serve alcohol? I don't know, it's that kinda, that's kinda getting, you know, in.
If they, if they have a legal liquor license in the state to be able to do that, and we allow them to do it here, then yes, they could do it at any, it could be at somebody's.
Home, whatever.
Home, I mean, if they're hired to come in as a caterer, you are giving them, making.
Cause I mean, you go to a restaurant, and it, and they serve liquor.
Now, if you want to attach to it, which we could put it in the ordinance, but it has to be in a commercials-owned area, or, I mean, you could add something to that, cause you can't, can we make it more strict than what the state has, Larry?
No, I don't think so.
So the state does not specify that.
So right now, people could be doing this without us having any type of process in place, right? So we need to get something in place so that.
I mean, at least they did. It's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna, especially with the event center being across the street, we're gonna get more and more of this.
Yeah. More and more, yeah.
When people book that and they wanna have alcohol, they're gonna have a caterer come in.
That's at this time of year, Christmas parties and all that kinda stuff. Okay, any other discussion? Motion's been made and seconded, who seconded?
I did, then.
I think Brody did, yeah.
Web, how you vote?
Yes.
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 Yep.
Okay, all right, next thing on agenda, Becky, if you'll go through your administrative report, do you have anything?
Okay. Grant update, Twin Cities Sewer Project, the project is complete and it's up and running, they did a test on it this past week, um, there'll be a few things that have to be anchored, some different things that have to be finished up, uh, there where the, um, lift station is, but for the most part, it is up and running, and it'll just be kinda closing out the project, I mean, is what's left there.
So L and R, S and H, all of that's connected to it?
Yes.
And anything else, and all that comes to Mountain Grove Sewer, right, somebody asked me, I thought that was right.
Correct.
Great, good deal.
It's up, up and running.
Yes, we did the test on it this last week, and it is all up and running now. Um, Lake Lily Project, have you guys been by over there and seen, I mean, it's looking really good over there, um, they're moving a lot of dirt.
It's looking great.
Um, we got lots of complaints about the dirt and the mud and the rocks on the streets during the hauling, I did. Top sweeper, um, and work on trying to get some of that off of the streets, um, but it's.
I did see him, one of his guys was on, across from Casey's there, down there by the fire station, they were, they were down there cleaning the streets.
Yeah, so they have been trying to get on top of that, because they're, but the biggest complaints really was on, um, on MoDOT, on Business Sixty, at, cause they were hauling the dirt over there to his building, just on the edge of town, and so, they really wasn't, the dirt they were losing out of the trucks, they're pulling in that lot that was really muddy, offloading, and getting the tires really muddy where they were offloading, and then when they were getting back on the highways, when they were losing a lot of that clay mud. Um, but lots of complaints about that kinda stuff, so, I have been in contact with them, so if anybody contacts you, Courtney is trying to address that and stay on top of that. Um, the Bulldog Project, the lines are complete, almost complete to the highway where they'll be going under the highway. If you drive by up there, you'll see that they're finishing up the lines in front of S and S recycling out there, uh, then it'll be going across the highway. You probably noticed over there across the highway in front of Bulldog Pipe, some markers and stuff there along the highway and some piping, that's the area that the lift station will be, and that will be where MoDOT will hook onto and go out to their building, um, once we get back.
Water and sewer is out there.
Correct, correct.
Okay, well, that's gonna be great.
So we're getting closer, it will be really nice to have Twin Cities and the Bulldog Project complete, be nice to get. The grant stuff has been a little overwhelming the last few months. Um, swimming pool, uh, we talked about that already, the condemned housing, the good building commissioner met with the property owners in attendance. Um, I don't know if you guys have had time to look over those minutes, but we attached those minutes for you, um, so that'll be an ongoing project for the fire chief back there, um, as he's working with some of these property owners to try to meet some of those deadlines. We're hoping to get that list way dwindled down before we have to do anything with any of the buildings, so hopefully that'll be the case. Um, City Hall renovation, you guys made a motion to go with Stiles Roofing as long as they could provide us with a warranty, and they did. Um, and they have estimated that they will start work here the week before Christmas. Um, Bo and his crew are doing the dirt work to prepare the building site, um, soon as they get that done, he thought he'd probably be done tomorrow, they'll come back and shoot it again, and hopefully get the concrete poured in the next few days, um, so that we're ready for the building to go up.
Question.
Yes, sir.
On the dirt work, are they packing that good, I mean, they doing compaction?
We'll leave that up to the professional that comes in and tells us what we need to do, I, Bo and those guys do not know, they don't have the expertise on all of that.
Okay. Okay. What is? Yeah. I just.
But the guy that's doing the concrete work and all that, we kinda depend on him to shoot that.
I hate to see him do all that and it not be compacted good and it settling.
But we're not doing any concrete on that, you know, it's really just, you know, there'll be gravel on top of that, we're not doing concrete on top of that, so.
Oh, okay.
The only concrete we're gonna have is the stem walls, so.
I have a question on the Oakland, we've talked about a month or so ago, that company worked on Oakland Street before, before you get down there.
The what?
On left hand side, there's some work being done, what's that? Before you hit the sewer, or something's there, gas or some, yeah.
That's the city shed.
That's the city shed, where the, where the old.
Yeah, that's where the sheds.
Cause some lagoons.
Okay, I'm gonna say the sheds.
That's where the sheds gonna be.
So it's not go up there with the rock, okay, that's.
That's where the sheds gonna be.
And, and then the other person give up, yielded their, their location, was that not the, their location?
We're gonna talk about.
Gotcha.
Okay, end of closed session. Um, city staff Christmas dinner, of course, all of you are invited to that, um, hopefully you all have responded to Kim, that'll be Thursday night at the Candler. Um, the mayor kinda wanted some information on fall cleanup, just to kinda give you some numbers on that. We have fourteen dumpsters compared to six to eight normal cleanups, the total cost of fall cleanup was eighty-six hundred for the dumpsters and approximately thirteen hundred and fifty dollars in overtime costs.
How much should we blow our budget on that?
A little over.
When I saw those numbers, I was like, whoa.
But we're, we're planning on quite that much.
Fourteen dumpsters at eighty-six hundred dollars, the total cost, that's not bad, cause I know Ellis said it cost him a thousand dollars to get his dumpsters hauled off and dumped, so that's not too bad.
Any feelings of what's different, what was different about how we did it this year that we got such?
I think one thing was, you know, we, we took our big sign and we put it out on Main Street, letting people know when the dates were. That was kind of the complaint I got back in the spring, was that people didn't realize we were havin', even having cleanup until it was over. So we just tried to get the word out a little better, letting people know and, yeah.
They want us to hand them a piece of paper, call them on the phone, text them.
I don't know.
Knock on their door.
Well, we didn't have to do that, we just had to reposition the sign and maybe a little bit further advanced notice than.
Yeah.
We put it on. And Bobby Pitt and Moore stepped out, we tried to get it out on social media, so maybe we did a better job and maybe people just accumulated a lot.
Maybe people just wanted to clean up this fall, or maybe just were getting the word out to clean up their property.
There's some new houses around, good, good.
Also, the weather was nice.
That's exactly, yes.
Yeah. And that's a thing, like when we have these, cause it, I consider that huge success, right, cause it needs more cleanup in our community. So I asked these questions, cause I was like, if we did stuff that worked really well, let's do it again.
I do too, yeah.
The next time or the next thing that we need to get a lot more traction on, learn from.
Uh, when we bid for the trash.
What's that?
When we bid for the trash?
Yes.
There's gonna be, I'm not gonna, oh, I shouldn't say.
Are you starting that pot already, sir, when we talk about trash?
Becky, Becky has some ideas for that, so.
Okay, Twentieth Street Sewer Extension, the engineer had to revise the plans for the sewer line to accommodate the property owners. Um, one of the main reasons was because it was going across some property that's not actually in the city limits, which belonged to Mr. Kelly. And they moved the line over too far, um, they've revised that, um, I've met with property owners out there. We actually have a meeting Thursday here at City Hall with the property owners and the engineer, just to go over everything with everybody, make sure everybody is comfortable with it. Um, and hopefully we'll be able to finalize those easements and be able to move ahead with, um, moving some dirt out there, so.
This Thursday, you have one, okay, first I thought you said you had one, but you have one.
No, this Thursday at four, we're meeting with the, the engineer will be here, I have reviewed the plans though, and where they have it marked out there now is the correct line. Um, and so hopefully we'll be able to finish most of this up by the end of the week. Um, the MoDOT public meeting was well attended, they said they got a lot of feedback, both positive and negative, most of the negative comments were regarding the roundabout at the square and a few regarding entrance issues. Um, we should receive final plans soon, they said it is still on target for twenty twenty-six. Um, we didn't went over the spill plan, Sonic Lodge, um, just as a, you know, the property purchase I put in there was just kinda to keep you guys up to date on, uh, people that have come in. That could potentially be a lot of homes that would be built out there on that ten acres, um, single family homes. But there is a huge amount of concern by the property owners surrounding that ten acres with water runoff. Um, there's some, um, vacant property next to it that they're very concerned, but the subdivision to the west of that property is also very concerned. Because some of those people at the lower end of that subdivision already have some runoff issues.
Is that the ten acres there behind the Virtues Old Place?
I don't know what the Virtues Old Place is, but once you go down Red Springs Road, right after you pass, it's that little white house with the land right there on the right hand side.
Yeah.
Is that by?
Yeah.
Mark, is that down by the fruit station?
Yeah, past the fruit station.
Yeah.
On, on the south side, yeah, yeah, that was an issue before when somebody else bought it.
Yeah.
And is that in city limits?
Oh, yeah.
That.
His land is now past that, isn't it, but that one is, yeah. Um.
So this, his, this, this person's buying this land butts up to.
He bought it.
Tate's, he bought, he's bought, you know what Courtney had?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There was an issue before of having to do something before, okay.
And I think that's all on my admin report, I do have several things that I need to discuss in closed session.
Okay. Alright, uh, we have some bills to pay.
Motion.
And a motion is second to pay some bills, all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
All opposed? We will take a short break and then we'll come back in closed session.
Motion going to.
Motion to go in, do, would you wanna do that, yes, just do that, motion to go in executive?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?